I'd like to call this meeting of the Williamson County School Board to order. The Williamson County School Board is meeting in person at 1761 West Main Street in Franklin, Tennessee, but we do have limited capacity. As a result, Williamson County Schools is officially meeting electronically as it is necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare in light of the coronavirus pursuant to Executive Orders Number 16 and 60 and signed by Governor Bill Lee and waiver of Williamson County School Board Policy 1.400. Board members, will you please record your attendance? And Lydia, if you'll please call the roll to do that.
Thank you. Angela Durham.
Present.
Mr. Cash.
Present.
Thank you. Elliot Mitchell.
Present.
Brad Fiskus.
Present.
Jenna Priya.
Here.
Jay Galbraith.
Here.
Sheila Cleveland.
Here.
Candy Emerson. Rick Wimberly.
Here.
Eric Welch.
Here.
Casey Hall.
Here.
Nancy Garrett.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, Deputy Eddie Cutres will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then a moment of silence afterwards. Thank you, board members. May be seated. We now come to items of particular public interest, which is the public comment portion of our meeting. We have five speakers signed up to speak tonight. They will have a maximum of three minutes apiece, and Casey Hall will be giving folks a time signal. If they exceed that amount of time, he'll give them a warning, and then they can be encouraged to go ahead and follow up. Our first speaker tonight is Anna Laura Morales from Ravenwood High School.
Anna?
Good evening. My name is Anna Laura Morales, and I'm a junior at Ravenwood High School. I'm proud to be part of this community, but every community has its flaws. One of ours is a lack of representation of minorities in our public school curriculum. My experiences are a reflection of that lack of representation. As a white-passing Latina, I realize I get treated differently when people find out that I am Latina. Students have made me feel uncomfortable in class after learning about my racial background, and my own teachers are often misinformed about certain historical events and the impact that they have on me. These are only a few examples that have led me to become passionate about speaking out against racial injustices, not only in my own school, but in my community as well. This is why I'm working on the Board of Diversify Our Narrative. Our mission is to include more culturally responsive pedagogy in our school curriculum. Jacqueline Woodson, a well-respected Black author, once said, "Readers are hungry to have their stories in the world, to see mirrors of themselves, if the stories are about people like them, and to have windows if the stories are about people who have been historically absent in literature." However, most of our books are only mirrors for white students because there isn't enough diversity. This doesn't only hurt our students of color, but it also hurts our white students because they grow up without understanding and learning about other cultures, which fosters a lack of empathy. By adding more literature by Black, Indigenous, and people of color into Williamson County's English curriculum, we will be able to foster that empathy. We want Williamson County to encourage a productive dialogue on race and identity among our student bodies through the inclusion of racially diverse, anti-racist texts in our schools. We are demanding that the WCS School Board require each high school English class in the county to read at least one book written by a person of color and about the experiences of people of color into the English curriculum. We are also demanding that these texts be analyzed to the same extent that any other traditional text would be analyzed in the classroom. We have a petition outlining our demands, and our chapter has over 800 signatures signed by members of the WCS community, including teachers. The nationwide petition has almost 70,000 signatures. Diversify Our Narrative has a recommended reading list, and if teachers find a book that fits our requirements, they could use that as well. We hope that if our petition passes, it would help students and teachers work toward racial justice, educational equity, and community power. Williamson County is a majority-white county, and Tennessee is a majority-white state. It is our obligation to teach our youth a full narrative on history, a narrative that often gets overlooked and ignored. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chris. Chris from Brentwood High School. Chris? Could you tell me how to pronounce your last name, please?
Incom.
Chris Incom from Brentwood High School. Chris, you may go ahead.
Thank you. Hello. My name is Chris Incom. I'm currently a sophomore at Rowan High, and I have been living in Rowan since seventh grade. I'm in complete agreement with the mission of diversify our narrative. The importance of diversifying the selection of books that students get to read every year is that first, we get an actual perspective from a person of color and not from someone who has either watched or imagined these experiences happen. We want to read pieces of literature about experiences of people of color written post-Civil Rights era in order to provide modern-day experiences. One, because it's easy to already agree that racism existed back then, and two, to allow students to learn about the day-to-day microaggressions that they have the privilege to not worry about. By sharing true experiences and struggles others have to face, we can together sway away from that idea that certain marginalized groups seldom go through both microaggressions and struggles as a whole. Students will get the opportunity to analyze these diverse texts, just as any other studied piece of literature, and dig deeper into the lives of our diverse group of authors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Our next speaker is Molly Volker from Franklin High School.
Hello. My name is Molly Volker. Today, I will be reading a speech written by Camden Blackburn, another organizer for Diversify Our Narrative. Because he was quarantined, he cannot be in attendance, unfortunately. Camden is an African-American student at Franklin High School, and this is what he prepared for today. "Good evening. Today, I stand in support of the Diversify Our Narrative petition, which demands that at least one book in every high school English class be written by a person of color. I stand in support of this petition because the Williamson County English curriculum is predominantly focused around Caucasian and European stories, culture, and point of view. And when reading about the experiences of people of color in our English classes, we primarily focus on topics including the history of slavery, colonization, segregation, and civil rights, all topics of great importance, but there is too often an avoidance of white brutality and racism in the modern world, as well as a glossing over of almost every aspect of people of colors, especially African-Americans' culture and past. In our curriculum, we learn specifically about three main African-American leaders: Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Rosa Parks, and Harriet Tubman. But why do we focus solely on these three incredible African-American leaders when we learn about countless white historical figures and innovators? Why not mention the hundreds of other leaders of color that pushed for freedom and civil rights throughout the ages, as well as the people of color who made our world what it is today through their innovation and creation? Adding to that, schools only teach the tip of the iceberg when it comes to literature involving people of color, and we never go into detail. In my time as a student, I can recall only two instances of reading about African-American characters in Bud Not Buddy and in To Kill a Mockingbird. From elementary to high school, we've read many books centering white narrators: The Outsiders, A Monster Calls, Lord of the Flies, etc. While all of these books have important themes, none of them have representation of people of color. As a result, many students in our schools feel less included in our society. One book that we've read that centers a person of color is To Kill a Mockingbird. While this book is one of the only books that we've read that includes African-American characters, it is problematic in many ways. One of the main issues with the way the book is taught is the use of a racial slur in the classroom. The teachers didn't consider that the use of the word might have made the people of color, specifically the African-American students in the classroom, uncomfortable, which in my case, it did. In our society, many kids are taught that these kind of words are bad things to say. However, once we started this unit, white students were told it was okay to use the slur if they felt comfortable with it. The reasoning for this was that because the book was written and took place in a different time when it was socially acceptable to use this kind of language, it was okay to repeat it in the classroom. I and the other organizers of Diversify Our Narrative believe it is time for meaningful and accurate people-of-color representation in our classrooms. Every student should feel that they are represented equally and that their stories are told. For these reasons, I urge you to take action to support this petition and mandate these demands. I appreciate your time. Thank you."
Thank you, Molly. Our next speaker is Kirsten Rodriguez from Centennial High School. Kirsten? It is Kirsten, right?
Good evening. My name is Kirsten Rodriguez, and I'm a junior at Centennial High School. I moved here in middle school from the Chicagoland area, instantly astounded by the socioeconomic and ethnic differences between metro areas and Franklin. When I was 12 years old, I was accused of selling narcotics to my peers. When I was 13, I was stalked in the halls and asked if I sold jewel pods. When I was 14, I was asked if I was a dealer. I had never touched nor even knew about the paraphernalia they were speaking about. These accusations were solely based on the knowledge that I'm a Mexican student. Going to Centennial High School, I'm considered one of the lucky ones. It's praised as being the most diverse school in Williamson County. In reality, only 17% is Hispanic, 13% Black, and 4% Asian. Even with such statistics, my school is constantly being targeted by rivals in demeaning, racist ways. How can I have pride in being from this community if people like me aren't treated with respect? As a county, we need to do better. People of marginalized communities are profiled day in and day out. Our standards of education are rooted in the achievements of the white man. Our entire view of history is skewed to worship a core group. The only way we can hope for change is through education. That's why I'm here today with Diversify Our Narrative. Our goal is to implement more teachings about Black and Indigenous people of color within our curriculum. We need the leaders of our schools to do better. We are raising a new generation with new ideals. Racially diverse texts could prompt our students to be leaders against racial injustice. We need inclusivity. We need diversity, and we need action. I hope my anecdote will spark ideas in your minds. Our community must no longer stand and be complicit in ignorance. There needs to be change. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight is David Huddleston.
He's not from a high school.
Mr. Huddleston, if you'll please state your name and give your address as you start. Thank you.
My name is David Huddleston. I live at 1218 Knox Valley in Brentwood, near the library. Well, I sent all of you last night an email about a book that I want to recommend in case you choose a book about racism. I'm not going to repeat the details of it, but I brought some copies of the book and copies of a review of it. And I wondered if I could leave those for maybe Superintendent Golden to address or to distribute. I think it's worth your time to take a look at this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our public comment tonight. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Welch, motion to second. Mr. Mitchell, is there any discussion? I see no discussion on the monitor from our attendees who are attending virtually. If not, then let's move to a vote.
Angela Durham.
Yes.
Dan Cash.
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell.
Yes.
Brad Fiskus.
Yes.
Jenna Priya.
Yes.
Jay Galbraith.
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland.
Yes.
Rick Wimberly.
Yes.
Eric Welch.
Yes.
Casey Hall.
Yes.
Nancy Garrett.
Yes.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Welch, motion to second. Mr. Mitchell, is there any discussion? I see no discussion on the monitor from our attendees who are attending virtually. If not, then let's move to a vote.
Angela Durham.
Yes.
Dan Cash.
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell.
Yes.
Brad Fiskus.
Yes.
Jenna Priya.
Yes.
Jay Galbraith.
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland.
Yes.
Rick Wimberly.
Yes.
Eric Welch.
Yes.
Casey Hall.
Yes.
Nancy Garrett.
Yes.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion for Mr. Welch.
Second.
Second for Mr. Fiskus. Is there any discussion? If not, Lydia, if you'll please record the votes.
Angela Durham.
Yes.
Dan Cash.
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell.
Yes.
Brad Fiskus.
Yes.
Jenna Priya.
Yes.
Jay Galbraith.
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland.
Yes.
Rick Wimberly.
Yes.
Eric Welch.
Yes.
Casey Hall.
Yes.
Nancy Garrett.
Yes.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Thank you, board members. With that vote, you've approved the following individual items: Approval of September 21st, 2020 School Board Reading Minutes; Board Policies for Second Reading Including 4.600 Report Cards and Grading Systems; You've approved the 2021-22 Budget Timeline; You've approved a donation of computers from Williamson County; A Physician-Supervised Request for a Student to be Exempt from Compulsory Attendance; The Music City Assembly of God Church Lease at Mill Creek Middle School; And the Town of Nolansville Sidewalk Aisment Request at Nolansville Elementary School. Next item on the agenda are communications to the board, the superintendent's report. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, board members. I'm going to hit a couple of points. It's a little bit of a review of what we discussed at our work session. You all know, and I think many of our families know because they've looked at some of the discussion, we had about a five-and-a-half to six-hour board meeting to discuss the items that are on here for tonight. And I want to emphasize to everyone that we're not going to spend five-and-a-half to six hours tonight talking back through our work session, but I thought it was important to make a couple of mentions of things we discussed. First, we're in the second quarter of this school year, and I will tell you, it was great to hit that milestone a little over a week ago as we moved into the second quarter. Everyone knows that it's been a tough year on so many levels. A lot of it, a lot of it, is related to COVID-19, and we know that it's going to continue to be a challenging year as those issues evolve and grow. So, we were able to get everyone back onto campus within two weeks of school starting. And you know that some of our neighbors locally and even beyond us are still trying to work on that, but it hasn't all been perfect. When the school year started, the Commissioner of Health said there will be positive cases in schools when we get back on campus, and we have had some of those cases. And we spent a few hours back on Thursday night talking about that, talking about the Health Department's quarantine process. We gave a lot of examples, and I know you've shared some of those as well. As one example, Gary Anderson, when he presented, talked about how the Health Department often is able to track down the source of some of those positive cases, and we know that it often is a result of some of our students spending time off-campus with each other and then, of course, coming back on campus. There've also been some related to events that occurred on-campus as well. But as a result of all those discussions, the board emphasized to us a couple of points that I want to make sure you all know that we're going to work on and that we're going to continue to report to you about. Number one is for us to continue to work to improve how we deliver instruction to students who are quarantined. And I know that that was something we talked about as the school year began. We have a protocol that we set up for that, but the reality is it takes individual attention for every one of those students who are facing quarantine. And the second big emphasis that we heard from the board on Thursday night was to work towards reducing the number of students and staff who are quarantined. And the scope of what we're capable of, maybe even beyond things that are within our hands, it may include communications with others about what they can do to help us improve that. One example is what I mentioned earlier, some of those gatherings off-campus. We want to continue to encourage folks to follow those safety protocols off-campus as much as they can. Likewise, though, on-campus, our staff is continuing to work with the local Health Department to find ways to minimize that. As part of that, I want to let everyone know that we are now in our second week and getting ready to hit our third week of our publishing, school-by-school numbers of individuals who are positive and quarantined. And that's on our website, our COVID-19 webpage, and so I would encourage families to look at that, look at your own school. For zero cases, we say zero. If it's less than five, we don't give the exact number because for something that's that small, it has the potential to be personally identifiable to individual folks. And so, when you look that up, you will see that we say less than five for those cases that are less than five. Likewise, you may see some trends in there, and that's something that we're tracking. I mentioned to you that in addition to tracking those raw numbers, we're also looking at the ratios of positive cases of individuals who are part of our community to the numbers of individuals who are quarantined, and that's something we're tracking. I finally mentioned to you related to that, that I've been encouraged, there have been times where we've had to move schools off-campus, had to close campuses, so that we could address either the number of positive cases that are affecting us based on Health Department recommendations, or when we reach a point where we just can't staff because of the numbers. And the encouragement I've seen is that in those times where we hit those points, within a few weeks, those numbers substantially drop. And I think there are a ton of reasons for that, but it reminds me of the old line about if you touch a hot stove, you'll learn not to touch a hot stove. My hope is that we've seen that in other places, and that it re-encourages us to be careful about our safety protocols. We hear nationally right now and at the state level, and even our county mayor has shared that in areas outside the school system even, the numbers are going back up. So, I just want to reemphasize to our families, to our staff, to our students, that we need to be cognizant of that and really still keep a close eye on that. We're not out of the woods. It's still going on, and y'all, it's hard. I know these safety protocols can be really difficult. So many of us have gone through that, but I tell you, I can't imagine the difficulty that we'd be facing if we weren't following those. It's very important to us to find ways to maximize the student experience on campus, and we're convinced that the processes we have in place are our best hope to keep students on campus. And I'll mention some things about that in just a second. But we also spoke about WCS Online, and we let you know that the deadline for choosing for second semester was Wednesday, but we sent an email to parents on Friday asking them to double-check us. And we, in essence, told them, "You have selected blank, whether it's on-campus or online, and if it's not correct, please let us know." We actually had a Google document for them to fill out. That deadline was today at 5:00, so we don't have our final numbers yet, but we have a general idea of our numbers. I wanted to make sure you all knew where we were with WCS Online. So, you may recall that we had about 6,700 students choose WCS Online for the first semester, which was about 17% of our total student body. I also mentioned a few months ago that compared to many of our neighbors, that was a pretty low number, at least a pretty low percentage. As an example, Rutherford County was around 40%, Clarksville-McGumry was around 40%, Franklin Special was at about 25%, we were at 17. The preliminary numbers, and I'm approximating again, is that we're probably around 5,000 or so students total who are choosing WCS Online for the second semester. So, it's about 75% to 80% of the students who chose it first semester. That's largely reflected in our elementary and middle schools. The high school numbers are probably not more than about 100 either way. We've had a number of high school students choose to go from online back to campus, but we've had a close-to-comensurate number of students who were on-campus choosing to go online. But again, we think we're going to see somewhere between 75% to 80% total compared to where we started for the first semester. And you all know that that's going to include a lot of scheduling issues with our teachers. We're going to try to find ways to maximize the students' relationships with their existing teachers for this first semester, but we know there is going to have to be some change. The bulk of what we're going to work on over these next few weeks, the plan for the spring semester, is to maximize that opportunity to stick with the teachers that they have, especially at those younger grades. And then, another thing that we talked about on Thursday was a discussion about race in our community, in our WCS community. And we presented to you a proposal for Derek Young Cultural Strategies, and you all shared some thoughts related to that. In the essence that I heard was that you wanted to spend a little bit of time talking with Mr. Young as you make this decision on hiring a professional to help. And I mentioned to you all, and this is critically important to the work that we do, our vision statement talks about growing a supportive environment so that our students can excel. In a lot of ways, our environment is supportive, but we have a lot of room to grow. Y'all, we have a lot of room to grow in how we support students, especially in the context of race. And my predecessors and I have worked on that, and after so many discussions, it's become apparent to me that we need a professional who works in this arena on a regular basis to help us develop a coherent plan to go forward. We talked about that on Thursday. We've talked to Mr. Young, and we are in the process of scheduling the time for you to speak with him and get your questions answered, because it's very important for the board as a whole, our leadership group, to commit to what we're planning on doing. And I do invite folks to spend time and go back and look at our discussion on Thursday night, but we intend to bring Mr. Young in. We'll give you notice of the time. We're going to have that interview set up, and then ultimately, I am going to ask you for authorization for funding for us to get some professional help, for us to lead ourselves into the future in this way. I will tell you, in that context, I was so impressed with the students who spoke tonight. Every time I hear our students speak, it does my heart good. I actually have a little bit of a chill mentioning that right now to you. The leadership that we see in our school buildings from our young people is incredible. I have spoken with young alumni, recent graduates of our system, about their experiences in the context of race. Those are real experiences, and the willingness of those students to step up and speak to that in a setting like this is just so impressive, and I'm so optimistic about their future. Ultimately, we owe this to them to help grow how we serve them. The final thing I want to mention to you, and I told Ms. Garrett, our chair, that I mentioned to our staff, I want to talk about some positives, and there's so many good things going on. With this COVID-19, we have worked on those challenges, and we haven't been perfect, but our students have done some unbelievable things. And we talk often about academics, athletics, and the arts, and I just want to hit a couple of examples. We've talked about academics just in the past, about hitting the third straight year of more than 50 of our students being named as national merit semifinalists. The finalist list hasn't come out yet, so we'll be talking about that, I'm hoping, in the next few weeks and months. But on the athletic side, there are a lot of nice things going on. You all know football, of course. That's what gets so much press time. We've been able to get the football season going. It's been a challenge. School by school, it's been a challenge, but I'm encouraged that our teams are still playing, and it's been impressive seeing how they push through. Golf just finished their season, and we had a number of state competitors in golf. Ravenwood Boys were the state runners-up this year. The Ravenwood Girls were fifth in the state. Franklin High had some representatives in that as well. Volleyball is getting ready to start their state tournament. Brentwood High and Nolansville High are starting that tomorrow. Brentwood High and Nolansville High are starting that tomorrow. In in the in in music, I I I can give so many examples, but I want to give one. Franklin High School scheduled some neighborhood performances in their community, where they actually went out to Fieldstone Farms. They have a scheduled go to Founder's Point in the Horseshoe Bend to perform for their families. So 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 a lot of our arts are still finding ways in this COVID-19 environment to perform. We actually have a safety protocol for them as well. And I got to tell you also, you may have noticed this in in some of our InFocus articles, a Centennial High School student, and I'm gonna name her, Sierra Scott, was one of nine students nationally who was invited to participate in Miami of Ohio Startup Weekend Challenge to to discuss business startup ideas and business planning. She is a student at Centennial who is also participating in our entrepreneurship program that that at the at our EIC, our Entrepreneurship and Innovation Center. Her business is a bliss box, as she calls it, which is which is a stress care package. And it's it's so neat to hear the timeliness of of that business plan that she has. That's one example of some pretty wonderful things our students are doing. And we, in the past, in my time as superintendent and my predecessors, have often spent time talking about the students' successes, and and there is a lot of that in them. So I felt like that was a good place to finish, at least for me on the student side. Our next item, Madam Chair, is 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 actually our school spotlight. But I before we give that school spotlight, I do want to open the floor to questions if any board members have.
Sure. Thank you. We have a question from Mr. Galbraith, and then followed by a question from Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two questions, Jason. For on the COVID website, I've asked this a couple of times, I haven't heard of haven't gotten a direct answer. So can we include, in addition to the to the cases and the quarantine, can we include the students that are on remote as a function of either, for whatever reason, whether they're moved for remote for staffing or for or for the lack of students? It doesn't really matter. I'm just looking at the at the total so that we can track for on a week-to-week basis how many students are on remote by bus schools being closed.
Yes, sir, we can. I will tell you, I'm not confident that it might that it would be 100% of what we can do is track those who who are who are remote as a result of the quarantine information we hear from the Health Department.
Right.
That's a great idea. And to that point, Mr. Galbraith, I believe that the information we share, whether it's on a website or otherwise, is going to continue to evolve over the course of this year. And I mentioned that that tomorrow is going to be our third week of doing school by school. Prior to that, you've seen that that we were doing totals dating back dating back, if I'm not mistaken, as of September 1st. So I do want to invite you all, if there's extra data that you're interested in, let us know, and we'll see what we can do to get it. I will also mention that the State of Tennessee Department of Ed has a website that shows active cases reported weekly, or see, I've already got it wrong, that shows new cases reported weekly. We are reporting that to the state weekly, and Monday at 5:00 is actually their deadline, so we've just we've just done that a couple of hours ago. And those are cases that that we, as a school system, hear of, school by school, over the course of the previous week. Again, that's from us, that's not from the Health Department, it's on the Department of Ed website. So yes, sir, we'll do that.
Okay, thank you. And and what is the what's the latest on the requirement for temperature checks? I know the CDC has discontinued that, and and I thought I heard rumblings that we were not, and that was coming from some people at schools, but are we are we gonna discontinue those anytime soon?
The CDC altered their recommendations to parents checking their children's temperature. We're in the process of of going through that to determine how we can transition from that. And so we're having this, we're having meetings ourselves related to that. I will tell you, at the county level, the county mayor is is requiring that temperature check for all of us in the school building, and so we want to have some conversations with the local health department, with county government as well, as as we evaluate that change. And I didn't mention this, but the state health department did parallel the the CDC recommendation for for that alteration. So short answer is, we're working on it. I will tell you, from a substantive perspective, one of the keys that I think is gonna get us through this quarter and into especially the winter quarter is that emphasis that we've given up, if you're sick, stay home. And we talked about this briefly at the work session, and I'll confess, I've done this in the past. You know, I've kind of sucked it up and gone into work without really even knowing why I was sick, right? Just not feeling well and pushed myself through. I want to emphasize to everyone that this is a time that that you need to stay home if you're sick, not just because of COVID, but because of the impact on the campus. So I can't help but give you a long answer to your question. My short answer is, we're working on that.
Well, I guess, just to follow up on that with regards to the to the questions that are asked, I know it sounds like some of the elementary schools, they're still asking the students the questions every day, whereas the high schools that are just walking through the through the scanner, and and I know of middle schools that I'm familiar with, they're just they're they're just taking their temperature and moving on, they're not they're not asking the questions. So if I just want to be consistent, if we're not gonna ask the questions, then don't ask. And I've had some parents just have some have some issues with with everybody with asking the children themselves the questions versus versus the parents, and and they've just said, you know, if there's a way to not ask those since everybody else hasn't, if we could be consistent on that.
Okay, thank you. We'll work on that, and we do have those notices posted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Jason, and I know there's a lawsuit against Williamson County Schools that's opposing our mask policy. Without getting into the details of that legal action, can you share what our current legal fees are to date and what we anticipate those to be?
Sure, and I would like to refer to Ms. Osbrook, WCS's attorney, if I may, Madam Chair, to answer that question.
Yes, could you repeat the question for me?
Yeah, thanks. Just looking for the cost incurred to date in our legal defense of that and what we anticipated to be.
Sure. So to date, it has been approximately $9,980, and that timeframe has been from September 11th through of 2020 through the end of the month, so the end of September 2020. That is the invoice that we have received regarding litigation. At this point, as you know, board members, you're never 100% certain how much litigation is going to cost. It always depends upon how many motions and and the time it takes. So I can give you a rough estimate at this time. Given what we have spent so far, I would estimate between $50,000 to $60,000 at the trial court expense that would not include any potential appeal if this case was appealed.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, which is the next part of your update?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is a school spotlight. Carol Bertsong is gonna give us a school spotlight that I'm very excited and proud about. Carol?
Mr. Golden, this is Vicki Hall. Ms. Bertsong did text me and say that she's lost her internet connection.
Okay. Well, I this is good because I get to announce this, and and the staff is gonna roll their eyes because I'm gonna tell a quick story. So Lipscomb Elementary has been named a National Blue Ribbon School. And yeah, let's 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 applaud that. And and Michelle Kontic, principal here, is is with us, and I'm actually going to, as a warning to you, Michelle, I'm gonna turn this over to you and let you speak to this briefly. But here's my here's my story. My high school was named a National Blue Ribbon School my senior year, 1985, 1985. And I actually drove by my high school a couple of years ago down in Georgia, outside Atlanta, and they still have that announcement out at the front of their school. And I tell you that to tell you, this is a big, big deal. This is a huge deal. A National Blue Ribbon School doesn't come around, obviously doesn't come around even once in a generation for some schools. But I am so impressed with Lipscomb Elementary, and I want to I want you all to welcome Michelle Kontic, the principal there. And Michelle, if you would, can you speak to this and speak to the to the nature of the of the award and what you all can look forward to?
Yes, thank you, Jason and board. We are so proud to have been recognized as a National Blue Ribbon School for 2020. We have an incredible staff that work so hard, but we also have incredible students that work extremely hard, too. And then we have the ultimate, the parents. We have incredible parent support. So when you put all three of those together, the parents, the teachers, the students, everybody working together as a team and as a community, you have great success. And we have had great success at Lipscomb, and we're really proud of everybody, and I congratulate the whole entire community. It was a team effort.
Well, thank you so much. And I will tell you also, Madam Chair and board members, ordinarily, the the U.S. Department of Education invites staff representatives up to Washington, D.C., and they have a pretty substantial celebration. And it's a it's days worth of meetings and celebrations and 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 time to share thoughts and and best practices. And sadly, they're gonna miss that this year. They've actually canceled those events. And I felt like it was very important to emphasize to you at this board meeting how impressed we are with Lipscomb Elementary. It's a it's it's one in a long line of WCS schools who've won this award, and I and I so much appreciate the faculty and staff there and the families who who've made this possible. So if if you would, share with us, what exactly is the U.S. Department of Ed going to do this year to celebrate?
You know, I don't have an absolute answer on that. We were told that on November 12 or 13, there will be some kind of virtual ceremony, but we're working with our PTO to make sure that we get to celebrate at Lipscomb, and we're planning something on November 12. And we're gonna paint the city blue, I think, celebrate National Blue Ribbon at Lipscomb.
All right, thank you. Congratulations, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. We did get another text from Ms. Bertsong, said she was kicked out of the meeting again, so we will miss your lovely dulcet tones, Ms. Bertsong, if you're up there. Thank you. Moving on to the board chair's report, just one quick item. Our board member retreat is scheduled for this weekend. I will be sending a couple of pre-reads along and ask that you look at them. They're not very long, they're just some things that we want to go ahead and look at prior to the retreat. So look forward to retreating and and talking to you all this weekend. The next item on the agenda is new business related to the 2020 2021 school budget. The first item is the General Purpose School Fund Amendment Safe Schools Grant. Director Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item is is asking you to approve our receipt of the Safe Schools Grant. Ms. Holman mentioned to you at the work session that these Safe School Grant numbers have actually gone up substantially over the years, and we recommend approval.
Do you have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Welch makes a motion. Mr. Cash seconds. Is there any discussion? I don't, yes, thank you. Now I can see the monitor. No discussion from the virtual attendees either. If if there's no further discussion, we can move to a vote.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Jenna Priya?
Yes.
Jake Albreth?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Thank you. The next item is the General Purpose School Fund Amendment for Donation of Robotics. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the second year that we've been offered this robotics donation, and I do need your approval to accept that donation.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Motion from Mr. Mitchell, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Priya. Any discussions? I see no hands up from our virtual attendees either, then we can move to a vote.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Jenna Priya?
Yes.
Jake Albreth?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Thank you, board. The next item is the request for Flex, also known as asynchronous learning Fridays. Mr. Golden?
If I may, Madam Chair, I believe the next one is the Education Capital Projects Fund's Trinity Walking Path.
Thank you, I skipped that one. Yes, the next item on the agenda is Education Capital Projects intra-category Trinity Walking Path.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request to to spend $106,000 and and a little bit of change for a Trinity Walking Path, and that's the proposal is out of capital funds, to run a walking path across the north side of the Fly Park Trail System to connect Trinity Elementary School to the Fly Park entry. Staff recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Motion to approve by Mr. Fiskus, do we have a second?
Second.
Sorry, excuse me, just a second. Mr. Galbreth, is your hand a second? Did your raised hand a second?
No, I was just I just wanted to comment.
Okay, thanks. So second from Ms. Priya. And discussion, Mr. Galbreth?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I guess this is for Leslie. Can can you tell us approximately how much how much money we have in the contingency?
In the rural contingency, I have about $3 million.
Is there, what about the what about the non-rural?
Um, I'd have to look at a spreadsheet. Can you wait for just a second?
Um, yeah, you can, or you can just, that's fine.
I can send it to you.
Yeah, that's fine. That's what I was looking for. I just I forgot to ask on Thursday, I'm sorry.
Okay. I'll email you.
But this is coming from rural, that's why you have it up?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
And this was also after we gave $3 million towards the new the next bond issue so that they didn't have to issue $3 million worth in bonds.
That's right, and and all that's because we came in under budget on on previous projects, right?
Yes.
That's correct. Which is a testament to Kevin, so thank you for that.
Any other discussion? If there's no additional discussion, then let's move to a vote.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Jenna Priya?
Yes.
Jake Albreth?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Thank you. And now the next item on the agenda is the request for Flex asynchronous learning Fridays. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the board members know, in our discussion at the work As the board members know in our discussion at the work session, we spent a good bit of time talking about our proposal, how the pilot of an asynchronous day went for teachers and students, and ultimately about our request that you help us find this way to give teachers more time for planning. Ultimately, without us going back through that entire discussion that we had, I want to mention a couple of things to you. One, this is a big lift and this is a big request. I want you to know that and I want our families to know that. It's unusual. It's outside the box. It's not something that we would request under ordinary times. And I know that you spent a lot of time on Thursday night discussing that. And I don't want to speak for everyone, but in that discussion we had, so many of you mentioned specifically that you recognize teachers need more time. I'm convinced that that additional time will ultimately result in a net positive for students because of the quality of instruction, because of lesson plans, because of teachers being able to get together and find ways to use pedagogy. You actually heard pedagogy mentioned by one of our students, which is in essence, ways to teach. To find ways to alter their pedagogy to address the challenges that we're facing with COVID, whether it's students quarantined or how a teacher can move about the classroom to WCS online on down, you know, through that detail. But we also heard you. And we spent a lot of time talking about two main concerns. One was parents being able to plan. And our proposal included October 23rd as the first date. And as a result of your discussion on Friday, we have actually deleted October 23rd as a day in our request. And I have added actually a second short memo to the long memo that gave a lot of detail where we've modified our request to remove that date. So we're actually asking for eight days that are in the memo that I presented to you. I also want to specify to you that that includes, for clarity purposes, a plan starting second semester to eliminate the late start days at our secondary schools. So those are the two modifications that we proposed based on our discussion at our Thursday meeting. So with that, I know we spent a lot of time talking about it. I don't want to belabor it. But with that, we do recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Welch, and do we have a second? Mr. Fiskus, second? And let's move to discussion. Yes, Ms. Priya?
I'd like to make a motion to amend.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So just want to make sure I'm doing this correctly. Ms. Osbrook, we have a motion to amend, and we have received a second.
So if we could get Ms. Priya to state her motion to amend, what she's wanting to amend, and then have whoever made the second renew that second, please.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Priya?
Okay, so I'd like to move to keep the first semester as is and amend the second semester for elementary only to switch from full asynchronous to half-days and then add additional half-days into the elementary schedule at staff's discretion to make the hours equitable to secondary.
Okay, so let me repeat that and see if I've got that correct. So you would keep the two days in this semester the same. They would be full days, Friday, November is the 13th?
13.
And Friday, December 4th? Oh, thank you. Thank you. You would keep those full days for elementary. But in the second semester, all the days that are currently there would remain full days for secondary, but would be half-days for elementary. And then other elementary days would be added at staff discretion.
To make it equitable.
Okay.
So that's the same number of hours.
Okay, so same number of hours, but just half-days in the spring semester.
And I'd like to ask the Chair for an opportunity to explain. Maybe after I get a second or whenever is appropriate.
Do we need a second first?
We do need a second to her motion to amend, correct.
Mr. Cash? Are you making that second?
Yeah, I can second that.
Okay, Mr. Cash seconds. And then Ms. Priya request a motion to speak or an opportunity to speak to this?
Yes, and that's proper.
Okay, great. Please go ahead.
Okay. So after the work session, I spoke over the weekend to many people, elementary principals, teachers, families in District 5 and staff. Thank you, Maria. To get a broader picture of where people stand. And the one thing that everyone seems to agree on is that teachers need this time. There's a good consensus at the secondary level among teachers and families that the asynchronous work works well for everyone. So students are able to work independently and stay home alone as needed. Those students with IEP goals that can't be met at home will be served at school. And eight more days of asynchronous learning across the remainder of the school year seems logical and needed at the secondary level. The part where I get torn is the elementary level, and here's why. The younger elementary teachers, K-2, have been in the classroom teaching since day one. They didn't get the first two weeks of remote with the built-in asynchronous Fridays to help with their planning time. They had to prepare not one, but two classrooms for splitting their classes. And then they had to move everything back into one classroom to let the upper graders come back to school. They've been doing this all along without once complaining about it. These younger elementary teachers have had the added lift of teaching all subjects in a single day. So unlike secondary teachers who plan for a single lesson and teach it to multiple class periods in a day, elementary teachers have to plan separate lessons for math, science, language arts, and social studies each and every day, and then take into account if they go remote or if some students go remote, they have to work that into. So with the state requirement to adopt a new ELA curriculum this year, they're also having to learn two new programs in reading and phonics in a year where nothing has been normal. Most of the teachers I spoke with at that younger level are desperate for that time to catch up and actually prefer to have the same full asynchronous days as secondary so they could get their heads back above water. And I think doing these first two days in November and December as full asynchronous for elementary makes sense because, one, it frontloads them with the time they need to better serve our students. And, two, it gives the K-2 kids a chance to practice learning remotely. They haven't had to do it yet. And with flu season and winter weather going and COVID and active COVID case numbers on the rise, we don't know what the winter will hold, and they may end up needing to make that quick switch to remote. So this gives them a chance to try it out and work out the kinks with enough advance warning to families to adjust their schedules. For the second semester, there are a few reasons why I think we should switch elementary to half-days. Developmentally and pedagogically, it's more appropriate for our younger students to learn in person. Half-days would work better for working families, especially if they're scheduled well in advance. A half-day on Friday allows for teachers to do the typical Friday wrap-up activities in person, such as spelling tests, et cetera, and then have their afternoons free to collaborate and plan. Half-days would be more equitable for the special education teachers so they could receive the gift of time as well. These teachers have had an extremely heavy lift with creating contingency learning plans for all students with IEPs. And it's important for the students they serve that they also have time to collaborate with the general education teachers. In the case of elementary full asynchronous days, the special education team still has to teach and provide support to every student with an IEP, some on campus and some remotely. And they will not have any extra time to plan or collaborate on those days. So taking into account that secondary teachers will be losing power Monday, I'd like to leave it to staff to find a few more Friday half-days that make sense on the schedule in second semester to add at the elementary level so that every general education teacher gets an equitable amount of planning time to best serve our students and get us through this year.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this amendment? I see Mr. Wimberly has his hand up. So Mr. Wimberly.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd be interested in staff's opinion. And I wouldn't mind hearing from WCEA. I do know that the teachers and principals, I think, have expressed a strong desire for full days as opposed to half-days. So I'd like some input before we vote on this.
So, Madam Chair, if I may get that started?
Sure.
So first, Mr. Wimberly, from a staff perspective, from my perspective as superintendent, we spent a lot of time agonizing over this very question. A lot of discussion centered around a lot of what Ms. Priya mentioned, including those grades kindergarten through second. Of course, elementary schools are kindergarten through five. Our original plan at our medium protocol included early childhood, pre-K, and kindergarten through second on campus. So largely, most of those students have not spent any time remote. Ultimately, we landed on full days because although the planning looks different, it's just as demanding and just in different ways. I do want to ask Dr. Royer to put a little bit of detail in that since she spent so much time talking to her principals. But before she does, I ask three big questions of our elementary principals in this context. Number one was, what about grades K through 2? And the second question I asked was, in essence, would you eat up your planning time in preparing those asynchronous lessons for students, knowing that you have not yet prepared asynchronous lessons for those students? And the final question I asked was, what about students with disabilities? And I would like Dr. Royer to address those and specifically answer your question about staff's thoughts on this. Dr. Royer?
Yes, sir, thank you. Ultimately, the answer, Mr. Wimberly, is that the recommendation was for the full days. And that was related to the time to be together, to collaborate and capture the momentum for all of the reasons that Mrs. Priya spoke to. The technology integration, the literacy development combined with the technology integration. And we recognize the ask. We know that the issue is there with the K-2 students. But we believe, again, to Mr. Golden's point, that the net positive is there, that teachers being able to spend time together, sit in the same room socially distanced or via Zoom, and collaborate together is what they need. We have established, whether it was through the survey through WCEA, through conversations with principals, that our teachers are being asked to work much harder than they ever have simply because of the time, simply because of what they're being asked to do. And we know that over the years, asking them to collaborate is where the magic happens. And so there were teachers who felt like, yes, this is going to take some work. This is going to take some time to sit and plan these lessons to make sure that it is still meaningful. As I mentioned last time, we have to remember that the asynchronous day is not a day of no learning. The principals have worked diligently with teachers to discuss what good asynchronous learning is, giving students choice. We've had our 3-5 teachers come in and talk to our K-2 student, or excuse me, our K-2 teachers to help them engage in appropriate asynchronous learning, both on the computer and away from the computer. We do believe that this time, just as Ms. Priya said, is going to give them the opportunity to prepare for remote learning if they need to go in that direction. And then to speak to the students with disabilities. We are, and I just want to stress this again, we met with all of the elementary building leaders, both in the Special Education Department and the administrators, to give them concrete ideas of how to capture the planning time for our students with disabilities and those teachers, the teachers of those students with disabilities, excuse me. And we feel confident in the principals' abilities to make that happen so that not only general education teachers are having this opportunity, but also our Student Support Services teachers. And again, we believe the principals and the teachers and many parents that I spoke to as well felt like the full day was going to be less disruptive. I recognize that there are people on both sides of that. But I wanted to share those perspectives as well.
And Madam Chair, if I may, invite Ms. Clemmon, the President of WCEA, to speak. And Ms. Clemmon, if you're comfortable, we have a microphone to my right. If you'd like to address it. And while she's walking up, I do want to mention one more thing, just to specify for clarity's purposes. Number one, thank you for your thoughtful presentation and recommendation and motion. For those spring days, if we did a half-day, from a scheduling perspective, if this passes, we would need to make sure that we still had asynchronous time in that second half of the day to make sure that those still counted as school days. So that would be part of our scheduling as well.
We recognize what a difficult position all of you are. I mean, finding time was extremely difficult. And so we are grateful for any proposal. The secondary is definitely the full asynchronous day because of the ability to work with the online students. With so many teachers having to teach all day long and then have to meet with their students at night, that's a real challenge. That a full asynchronous day helps with secondary. With elementary, that problem doesn't exist. The teachers are either fully online or fully in the classroom. There are significant challenges for K-2 that the half-day situation makes much more tenable because you would be able to cover a lot of those core subjects early in the morning. I'm not sure Dr. Royer would have to work out that schedule as to how that would balance. Our membership was, again, mostly split with K-2 definitely preferring the half-day. 3-5 would be happy with either. Ultimately, all of the teachers have said, we will be happy with any time that you can give us whatsoever.
Thank you.
Mr. Galbreth?
Excuse me, may I finish?
Sure.
I guess what strikes me is, first of all, I'm really appreciative of Ms. Priya bringing this up. Our new colleague. That shows creativity and initiative. But I guess I'm going to have to say that our senior staff has been asking many of the same questions, most of the same questions, along with many, many others. And they've been defending this plan for repeatedly. And I have to say that as interesting as this amendment is, that I'm inclined to want to follow staff's recommendation on this. I kind of feel like, particularly since this has been brought up before, that if they felt this was the best way to go, that they would have recommended it. And again, over and over, they've defended it and gone through a lot of tough questioning of it. So I guess I'd have to say that at this point, I'm inclined to want to go with the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Next up, I'm sorry, I thought it was Mr. Galbreth, but I actually had Mr. Welch first, then Mr. Galbreth. And then Mr. Cash.
Thank you. I had a lot of the same questions Rick did, just what was staff's recommendation. Was also interested in hearing what Ms. Clemmon said. And so what it sounds like is staff's recommendation is what they have recommended. The only other thing that I guess I'll add or ask to that is, Mr. Golden, is if we do pass the recommended version that you're bringing to us tonight at WCEA is also recommended. If we see that we do need to change, would we be able to change that? Would you be able to bring that back and go, no, after trying this out, we would like to do a half-day version? Or would we be locked in?
That's a great question. One of the things we talked about just a few months ago was trying to be nimble in our response to this pandemic and its effects. Well, we brought this to you as a whole, in part because of a scheduling issue with the holidays coming up. So for sure, through January, we need this commitment from you. And we really wanted to let our families know that we're... To know what to plan for for the rest of the school year. With that said, if either this doesn't work or we get over a hump or something substantially changes and quarantine drops to minimal, it's possible we may not need some of these in the later part of the year. And I do want to maintain that flexibility that I think we need through the whole year. Short answer is, it's possible that we may change. But realistically, I think for sure, at the least through January, based on what I've heard. And frankly, we believe it's going to go through March.
Sure.
But we're open to some nimbleness with that. But I'm but it but we're open to to some to some nimbleness with that possibility.
Certainly. And I was referring less to the canceling of days, which I think I certainly understand, but to changing direction from pure asynchronous to the half-days.
Gotcha, gotcha.
But from what I'm hearing, you say is is potentially some nimblness. But for now, you fully evaluated both options, and this is the the option that you're recommending.
And let me give you a specific, concrete, boots-on-the-ground example. We have structured this basically every two weeks. We know that many of our teachers will be able to do chunks of two-week planning with their teams for for those for those lessons. And so that's a, we really have thought out the schedule in that context.
Mr. Galbraith?
Thank you. So I really do, I appreciate the the desire of staff. And I think if 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 asked, the the teachers own a majority, though. I've heard I've heard people, I've heard teachers and principals on on both sides of this issue. So I know y'all are hearing. I mean, I don't I don't mean to mean to say that that you're not hearing, you know, all sides, and y'all have looked at all sides. I completely, completely appreciate that. I said, but I I'm I'm trying to balance the 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 needs and desires of the of the parents, the the desires that the that the students, I believe, are going to learn better in the classroom versus on an on an asynchronous day. And yes, they they may very well need need one in the in the future, like a remote or an asynchronous day in the future. But but I'd rather not accelerate that. And we can we can deal with that if it if it comes. So I'm I'm thinking more along the lines of, I think this, Ms. Appria's amendment strikes a really good balance between between the the needs, the planning needs of the teachers and working with the what's best for students and, I think, for parents. And so, I mean, I think if I if I look at the numbers right, you know, they could probably get their full academic day in in the morning. And if there was, you know, I mean, that's completely up to up to up to staff and how how they structure that day. But it seems like a really, when we're when we're talking about trying to get as much as much in-person time as possible, I think it seems like a good balance. And and I and I guess the the extra days was kind of an interesting thing for me. I guess I'd I would be I'd be OK with it if that were just strictly at at staff's recommendation. If you if you feel like that those are those are needed, as long as they were scheduled in advance, like like Ms. Appria said. So I I would be in favor of this so far.
Mr. Cash?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you for, Ms. Appria, for coming forward with this motion. I just have a couple of things to say about it. You know, 99% of the time, I go with staff recommendations. They're they're in this every day of their life. They work on this every day of their life and, you know, know pretty much what they're talking about. But I I can't do that in this case. I just can't do that because I just don't think there's enough emphasis on the children, the elementary children. This amendment, I I feel that should be started right off at half-days for elementary school. I don't know if we have to do something else, you know, if that doesn't pass or whatever. But I think it was a great job, and I think it it would serve the the children better. Because I I have to ask, really ask, people in this room and the thousands out there, do you really think if children are on all-day asynchronous, K through five, do you think they're going to get any instruction? When thousands and thousands of parents work, these little ones, K through three, there's not going to be parents around to help them and guide them through this stuff? Do you really think we should let their those instructional days go? I I don't think so. And I think there's thousands that would agree out there with me. I just don't think it's going to work for those children. It's unfair to put them in this situation. Because you know what? Even with this, all this COVID and everything, they're under a lot of different stress and whatnot also. Why would we put the burden of of going remote? And I mean, I know I know some of them get around on the computers. I watch them. I, excuse me, I have a bunch of kids of my own, grandkids that I take care of. I see it. I see them work on it. But on a full asynchronous day, I don't believe an elementary student is going to stay engaged without that in-person teacher. We cannot replace them. Now, give them a half a day. Like Ms. Appria said, you know, you can feed them, send them home. And then we can combine asynchronous and or remote and in-person training. You know, get our core classes taken care of in the morning and send them home with a couple of assignments, giving them a full day of instruction. I don't see why we would want to wait until the first of the year because frankly, I'd be afraid something else will come up to where it's got to be all asynchronous for some reason. But the bottom line here, folks, is there's nobody in here that I know that can predict what's going to go on tomorrow. I can't see see scheduling days off if it's not absolutely necessary. Now, I know, and I I probably went off on what I was proposing. But this is great if we can have half-days starting from the beginning. And I would hope that staff could come up with ways to help elementary school teachers get their planning time. Because I I know that's important. I mean, it's it's, you just get in the groove teaching a class in person. Everything's going great. A couple of kids today test positive for COVID, or a couple of teachers. Now you've got 50, 60, 70 kids in quarantine. That that's got to be depressing and disturbing to teachers. I mean, I understand all this. But I've got to go back to my original thoughts is elementary school needs to be four hours in class and use the remote, and that'll start getting them in the, you know, and in a habit of remote in case we do get quarantined on a bigger way in the future, because we never know. So that's that's what I would support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cash. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So first off, I appreciate Jason and Julie and Lee. I appreciate, and Dave as well. Appreciate the effort that you guys have put into planning and figuring and developing this plan, I guess. Couple of questions I have. If if we approve the plan as it as it's given, Jason, is that, are these days set? I think you you answered, talking to Eric. Are these days set forth in concrete? Or is this something that we will, that you're going to review as the time goes along? And if staff besides you guys decide that it's not really necessary for for an additional day, or is it possible that you'll back off some of some of them?
To Mr. Cash's point, we don't know what the future holds. As we sit here, we've got a plan, and and we've concluded that we need it on this schedule. But is it 100%? Might something substantially change before March where we say, you know what? We don't need them. It could change.
OK. Per Jennifer's suggestion of of half-days and then you can you can apply other half-days at at your discretion, I guess the question is, is that not risking creating twice as many of these of these flex days if you decide that you really need the full out, the full hours of allotment?
From from a from a convenience perspective, from a planning perspective, we didn't recommend this because it does have the potential to disrupt more days. We really did try hard to minimize the number of days because we do want to respect that for parents. So it is a balancing act. And I think about, I think Mr. Hall mentioned on Thursday that reasonable minds can differ on this. I think he used some phrase to to that extent. There's lots of possibilities. And it but for what it's worth, that was, we didn't really, we didn't really think about adding those extra, those extra, you know, events on a daily basis, really for two reasons. The one I mentioned about scheduling in the planning process, and then second, the disruptions.
So I know that you guys about, I I guess the question I have, and I I think I know the answer to this, but I'll ask it anyway. You, staff evaluated and discussed doing half-days for elementary, did you not?
Oh, yes, deeply.
And and what was the reason that you that that you and your team did not did not go that route?
I'm going to give you a short version, and Doctor, but I'm going to invite Dr. Royer to fill in. This is this because this is what landed in my mind. Having that full day to plan with the team where they can really knock out some real work, ultimately, it was 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 a bigger deal than splitting it.
Julie, did you have anything to add to that?
I would just add that the the desire to be able to do justice to the implementations, to the tech integration, to the the general lifts that teachers are being asked this year, they felt like that could happen best when given the consistency of full days, the time to be able to deeply engage in collaborative conversations, to even walk away and do some work and come back together. That that pedagogy, the opportunity to say, to share best practices, to sit and engage in creative thinking, to share those strategies that some teachers are are learning better across the hall and being able to sit and engage in that, it takes time. And we believe that that full day offers teachers the opportunity to increase their level of effectiveness in a way that will benefit kids. We just felt that the full day with, in a planful way, gave the teachers what they needed to to do justice to the work that they're trying to do.
OK. I guess as I was reading through through the email that's come in on this communications, and I maybe I missed it, but I didn't see a a single teacher say that additional planning would not improve the quality of the lessons. I mean, every every email I got from every teacher mentioned the fact that the additional planning is absolutely critical to the quality of the teaching that they do.
Yes, sir.
Furthermore, they were, the the additional points of they're having to teach a new English language arts standard. So they're having to spend additional time to to learn that. We've got new platforms and et cetera that have put pressure, you know, tremendous pressure on the teachers and the staff this year. I mean, and that was a constant, that was a very consistent message from all the teachers. I didn't see any teacher communicate, to me at least, that said they don't that they they don't want additional planning opportunity and time. So so I'm supportive of the staff's plans on this. And and Jason, I guess, I I think Rick asked it, I'll ask you again. What what's your, what is your and your staff's recommendation on Ms. Appria's mode amendment?
Ultimately, we recommend what we proposed. I respect the the proposal, and it will help. I'll tell you, it will help. But ultimately, we we've landed on 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 this this request that we've made.
Thank you.
Mr. Fiskus and Mr. Hall, if your hand is up, be prepared after Mr. Fiskus, please.
Oh, first of all, just thank you for listening to us and the concern from parents about getting something scheduled quickly for Friday. So that that helped quite a bit. As a as a former teacher who had middle school students, young middle school students, there's a different behavior among students when it's a half-day on campus. Even even though you don't want it to be, they're just, the reality is, there is. And I can imagine that at an elementary level, that that also happens. And so the question too, and you, I think you led, you mentioned it, but reiterate the challenge of having kids on campus half-day, sending them home. The rest of that day isn't, it has to be counted in some way, right?
That's right. So if we did a half-day, we'd, you know, of course, students would arrive. We'd send them home, and they'd have a window of bus time or drive time home. And then they would have some asynchronous assignments after they got home. So from a pure scheduling standpoint, it, you know, the 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 schedule structure, even though the bulk of it would be asynchronous afterwards, would be structured to allow for additional time beyond the official end time because you'd be substituting out the the travel time.
OK. So you'd have to substitute time at later than the regular dismissal time for the asynchronous account to count, is what you're saying?
That's right.
Yeah. And so, and I I have struggled with this too because I think, you know, you know, K-2 kids and and using a computer and those kind of things to get their lessons. I know that they're much more digitally savvy than than even my kids were at five and five to seven eight-years-old, right? But so I struggled with that. But I think ultimately, from listening to the teachers who I've talked to on the phone, but also in the emails, while they want to have as much in-person teaching time as they can, they want that time to be effective. And they all feel that the most effective way for them is to have time that's dedicated to in-person planning. Because if you take a half-day and then those kids leave, it's it's hard for all of us just to shift into that next mode. If you think about the the time that they would, those kids leave at, say, noon, you get, they get lunch, the teachers get lunch or whatever, and then they're supposed to shift into this planning time. It's, it won't be the same experience as it would be in what staff recommended. And so I appreciate the the work because I know she worked hard, talking to a lot of different teachers. And the feedback that I've received is while it's not ideal, we're not in an ideal situation. So ideal would be in school every day, five days a week. But this provides us an opportunity to enhance those days by taking some time away. So I I'll have to support the the staffs.
Thank you, Mr. Fiskus. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I I also appreciate the the input. And Mrs. Appria's amendment definitely has merit, and I appreciate that it's resulted in additional discussion about this. I've I've gone back and forth, too. I've heard a lot of feedback from families about having K through two opt out of this. And then we heard so much that those teachers need this time as well. I know that this is disruptive for families. And we're there were conversations about expanding SAC and having more opportunities on campus to accommodate those families. And unfortunately, we've got parameters and challenges with staffing that appropriately. So to me, this is, this is a really difficult situation. But I think that, given this unique school year and what we've had to go through all along this process, that we really need to provide all reasonable requested resources to make sure that we're delivering the best education that we can. In fact, I would have preferred that we kept the 10-23 date. I think that the board, you know, wanting to pump the brakes on this a little bit, took that off the table, and we need to, we need to front-load this as much as possible. And and that date had been shared by principals, and they shared that it was contingent on a board vote. I appreciate, Mr. Golden, that you responded to the to the feedback from the board, but I think we would have been OK with that. I don't want to tweak the staff recommendation much more on this. I I think that- Um, I, I think that this is so important. I took a lot of comfort in the fact that many, uh, much discussion was made of the synchronous time that would be happening. So the, the kids are not left literally to their own devices, no pun intended, but, um, three check-ins a day plus other opportunities to work directly with their teachers. That makes me feel a lot better about this situation. Uh, again, as everybody said, it's not ideal and, uh, I think that it's really heartening that we're, there's such a good consensus among everybody on the board, uh, that I've heard that this is desperately needed and I really appreciate the overall support for this, um, but I'm inclined to go with the staff recommendation too.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Mr. Galbraith?
Um, Jason, you said, you said that, uh, half days are only counted, um, as half days. I, I thought that if we, um, is it only on an inclement, uh, reason to shut down that, uh, that half days aren't counted? Cause if we, if we go and we have a half day at school and, and then you shut down for, for snow or something like that, then we count that as a full day of, of instruction, correct?
There, yeah. So that's a great question. There are limits on scheduled half days, uh, and we have those built into the calendar. For inclement days, in my experience, the state, um, has been very accommodating, uh, on, on us having to leave in the middle, let's say a storm's coming in. We haven't hit a crisis point, uh, in, in, in many, many years on Mac, on using all those dates. But, uh, but for planning purposes, when we have a schedule, we have already scheduled all our half days. So we could not schedule a half day without reporting it as an inclement weather day.
Gotcha. So you could, so you could use a, so we're, so when we're talking about days, we're really, we're really talking about scheduled hours at, at this point, right? I mean, so.
Effectively, yeah. And it's funny that Mr. Priya and I had a conversation over the weekend about that. And one of the, one of the things I left her with is no discussion in this context is simple. Uh, cause yeah, we have a combination of hours and days, uh, inclement days, um, the, the minimum school day, the total number of minutes that we have on down the line. But yes, you're right.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Durham?
Okay. Thank you, Nancy. Um, my only question is really just about the inclement weather days and, um, why we, you know, if we would approve even the initial, um, I guess proposal, why we wouldn't just use that even the second half of the year as inclement weather days? That would only be then what six days? Why couldn't we do that as opposed to making them asynchronous for the kids and still give the stu, the teachers that time to plan?
That's a, that's a really good question too. And it's a, it's a topic that we spent some time discussing. Um, so just to make sure everybody knows we're on the same page, we have 10 stockpile days that we call inclement days built into our calendar because we go longer than the state minimum, uh, on a daily basis. Uh, and, and we do, we do have the power to use those inclement weather days. If, if in this example, we would actually need to submit it to the commissioner for approval. Ordinarily it's just an automatic. If, if, if a storm hits, it just, they just automatically do it. But if we do it, we'd have to get commissioner approval. But ultimately that's not why we, we landed on having instructional time. It's because we know that we have the, these tools available to us to do some asynchronous, synchronous mix now that we haven't had in the past. And we'd rather do that and include some instruction, albeit less than, you know, potentially or different than what's on campus rather than simply foregoing the days. Ultimately, that's where we landed.
Okay. And I, I said I only had that one question, but I did have two more actually, and they're more in the weeds and operational, but I do have to just ask, what are the penalties if the kids can't get online? You know, cause I know you, we will have a big hurdle with that K to two, whether it's half days, full days or whatever. What are we going to do there? You know, if they are home without supervision and they don't or can't get on there, how are we going to handle that?
Well, that's a great question. And like everything that we've worked on this year, we're addressing it in multiple ways. So number one, the elementary schools have spent some time with parents, double checking and making sure that they have that online capacity. Uh, number two, as part of that, uh, there's been discussion about KJ's and you guys are familiar with that discussion. Number three, for those who report that they don't have internet access, uh, we would apply the same standard to those students that we have for students in remote, uh, up to this point, which is we can make our, our campus available for those small numbers of people who don't have it. Number, yeah, what, I forgot what number I'm at now. But, but thank you. Number four, uh, from a, from a remote perspective, uh, we've had those issues from time to time and even on WCS online with students, um, falling off or, you know, whatever, whatever server not working. And the assignments, uh, has, have, uh, have, have had some leniency to them so that students have some time to get that prepared. Uh, so, so that's, that's the short version of it. There's, there's probably five and six, which would include teachers checking on their students. Uh, and, uh, and, and, and even at the youngest grades, uh, some, some written assignments are possible as well. It's going to vary a little bit from teacher to teacher, including the teachers preparing their students ahead of time for what to expect that next day.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Durham. I don't see any, any other hands up, but I, I do have a question. Um, Mr. Golden, what, can you, can you address what we're doing in terms of childcare?
Thank you for that. And actually when, when a, when another board member asked a question, it actually crossed my mind. I want to give you guys a little bit more detail on childcare, uh, than, than where we were on Thursday. I'll give you the short version and then invite Dr. Oyer to speak to this. Uh, number one, um, we are providing SAC, uh, school age childcare to those families who have signed up for it. It's a balancing act because some of our SAC workers can only work a part-time schedule, either before school or after school or both, because they have something scheduled in the middle of the day. And so what Dr. Oyer and the SAC staff are working on is finding ways to fill in those gaps with general ed teachers assistance as an example, uh, at the elementary to fill in. Um, one of the things they're also planning on doing on these days is, is in essence, cutting the actual physical locations in half. So a parent, instead of driving to their particular school, they might drive to a neighboring school so that we can maximize that staff and maximize those state ratios so that those, so that we don't have those one offs. As part of that, Dr. Oyer has analyzed, uh, our, um, our staffing compared to our participants. And, and, uh, Dr. Oyer, I think, uh, I think I got these numbers right, but just to make sure, uh, what you said was that we actually have a total of 75 available spaces scattered across the county. There are some particular locations that have a waiting list, but there's, but there's a little bit more capacity at about five per some of those, some of those, uh, some of those locations. And our staff and our principals will work with individual families to find ways to meet their particular needs to try to maximize what we do to serve those students if they're, if those families are having trouble with, uh, with, uh, with that. I will tell you also, there, there, they've examined some other issues even beyond SAC. Uh, so Dr. Oyer, if you would, speak to that.
It's very hard to follow Mr. Golden because he generally covers absolutely everything and then says, add it, add to it. You nailed it, Mr. Golden. I don't know that I would, I would add much more. We, um, Leslie Weaver, who's the director of SAC is incredibly, um, determined to try and figure out how we meet the needs. As, as Mr. Golden said during the work session and, and this evening, there are challenges, you guys, that, that are just strictly limitations to what we can, what we can offer. Um, and we also know that we're in a little bit of crystal ball planning, um, was a phrase Dr. Lachance used earlier today when we were talking about this. We, we, we need to try and get a grasp of what the needs are so that we can more appropriately plan. Um, our principals are thinking about it. We're talking about what we can do to maximize the people that we have in the building, um, to help meet the needs of the family. So it's a bit of a vague answer, um, Madam Chair, but we, we are committed to trying to figure out how we can do it to get as much childcare available to our families as is possible.
Thank you. Um, just a note to the board, we're, we're moving into our second round of comments. So, um, let's, let's be as hippy as possible.
I'll take that, Madam Chair, as advice to me as well.
Advice to everyone in there. Um, Mr. Mitchell, then Mr. Cash.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I did have two, conversation has sparked some additional questions for me. Um, what are we doing for food service for the, uh, families that, the children that need that?
Uh, this year, all students, including online students do get, uh, do get lunches. We actually have a number of online who are doing it. We will provide those to everyone else as well. That's actually part of the USDA, uh, federal program for this year.
Okay. So that's available to the children that, that would normally give breakfast and, and lunch.
That's correct. We actually do some delivery and some pickup.
Okay. The second question I have, are there hourly employees that would, that would be adversely affected by this?
So, um, short answer is no, um, but, um, I just want to double check myself. Ms. Hall, uh, am I missing in anyone?
I'm sorry, Mr. Golden, can you repeat that question?
The question is, are there any hourly employees who'll be adversely affected by this?
By the asynchronous day?
Yes, ma'am.
No. No, they should not be.
Okay. And so my reason for asking that is, is that are there options there to augment the SAC staff with, uh, with, with our typical, uh, support staff? I know you talked about teachers assistance and stuff.
Yeah. And so, so general ed teachers assistance are our primary source for help, uh, at the elementary level. Special education teachers assistance will be helping students with disabilities, many of whom will be on campus. Um, uh, but, uh, and, you know, bus drivers, et cetera, um, will, will still be helping out. Um, I was trying to just double check myself and make sure I wasn't missing the group, but they are still brainstorming that, um, that, that extra help.
Thank you.
Mr. Cash, then Mr. Welch, then Mr. Galbraith. Okay. Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a couple of things, you know, just listening to everyone. Uh, there was a mention about remote learning. Uh, one is, why can't we combine a half a day with some remote learning after school? And I, I know, uh, Mr. Fiskus mentioned that, you know, after they eat lunch and by the way, the kids could be fed before they went home. So that'd save a lot of service from that area, but, but, um, you know, kids go home with homework every day, even the, even the little fellows, you know, they got reading assignments and, you know, math, math assignments and whatnot. So I don't see a, any difference. I mean, would we get credit for a full day?
In, in that case, based on our understanding from the state, no, we would actually have to have the, the scheduled time, uh, that, that now, we know for practical purposes with asynchronous, students are kind of on their own schedule, uh, and some students complete assignments quicker than others. Uh, but, but from a presentation standpoint, our schedule will need to include the time that shows that it meets that state minimum, which is six and a half hours.
But if you included the core, core training in the morning, you'd already have that for just a full flex day, you'd still have the, all those assignments in order anyway, wouldn't you?
Well, so for us, uh, half day's about three and a half hours, you know, that give or take a few minutes. Um, so we'd have to, we'd have to make sure that our schedule included a, uh, uh, an estimate to show that the, that the, that the minimum day is a day. As I told Mr. Galbraith, there is an allowance for a certain number of half days built into the calendar, even with that six and a half day requirement, but we're, we've already consumed all those with the, with the, with the calendars that we approve annually. So the short answer to your question is, no, we couldn't do it that way because we, because those half days are already built into the calendar. We have to show the full days.
Okay. Um, why could we not, uh, let's see. And you answered that. Why could we not, uh, the, the elementary teachers would be getting four, four hours roughly of planning time and whatnot? Why couldn't we add in a Power Monday for elementary? We used to have them all the time.
Well, that's a great question too. We brainstormed over that. Um, a few years ago, Opium Elementary did, uh, Power Mondays. Ultimately, these, edge, the, um, elementary schools as a whole did not adopt those and the big driver was taking care of the children during that window of time before school because of our bus routes. Um, I will tell you that, that, uh, that, that the changes we've experienced this year have triggered a lot of thoughts about the future and that's one item we're going to explore for next year. But from a planning perspective for this year, right here, right now, uh, the power days, which would include, um, the normal bus schedule and bringing them on campus would require us to staff childcare in a way that we just don't have the capacity to do right now.
Hi. Excuse me. Go ahead, Mr. Cash, and then I wanted to follow up real quickly.
Why could we not implement that this year? That would give them five hours of planning time a week. Okay? And they wouldn't have office hours like they're going to do in middle and high school.
Well, to, to implement it would require structuring it so that we have enough staff to do, to do that childcare for those students who arrive early. And it's just, it just, it's, it's more students than we're capable of serving.
People are, people are willing to volunteer, uh, Mr. Golden. Um, I went to the Power Mondays at Opium and I had a ball. I mean, it was great and teachers did get their planning in. So that's just one option. And, uh, I just feel if we're gonna, if we're gonna go with this amendment, it should be, we should start the half days on the front end. So it is just scheduled right out rather than thinking about it changing at the first of the year. And, uh, that's my next question is, I feel this amendment's great, except for the elementary not going to half days.
So right now, the motion on the floor is the two full days this semester and then go to half days next semester. And I believe our attorney wanted me to remind everybody that that is the motion that, that we are discussing right now. We've had a really broad conversation, which in a way is good because it's covered lots of grounds, not only for this, this conversation, but if we do go back to the original motion as well. So, um, just, just want to remind everybody of that. Um, Mr. Welch, I believe you're next.
I'd like to call the question, please.
Okay. Do you need a second for that?
Um, uh, Ms. Ospritz can answer if I missed this. Ms. Ospritz, call for the question unless there's, uh, unless there's, uh, an objection, then it, it would move on. Uh, but it, but if there's a vote on it, it would require a second and a vote.
Correct. And, and Ms. Garrett, I'm not sure who else was asking to speak since we're on to round two. Is there anyone who hasn't spoken as to the motion to amend? Who is, who has requested to speak?
There is no one who has requested to speak who has not already spoken at least once.
Okay. Is there, is there someone who has spoken at least once who at this point is requesting to speak?
Yes, there's one other speaker behind Mr. Welch.
Okay. Then, um, you can move, he's got a, a motion to, um, he's called the question, so you can, um, move to a vote as to whether or not the question should be called as to the amendment. Unless the person who is waiting to, to speak at, you know, unless there's some acquiescence there and I can't recall who was next.
Mr. Galbraith, you're next. So the, I think what, what Ms. Ospritz is asking is, do you object to calling the question? Am I correct, Dana?
Correct. If he has an objection, then you can go to a vote of calling the question. Otherwise, if y'all are ready to move forward, you can just move forward with the vote on the amendment.
Okay. Mr. Galbraith, do you have an objection?
I do. I'd like to speak if possible.
Okay. So we need to vote on Mr. Welch's motion to call the question then?
Correct. And that'd be a, a voice vote.
Thank you. Lydia?
Yes, ma'am. Angela Durham?
No.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
So let's make a point of order here. We're voting on the- We're voting on the call of the question.
Yes. If you vote yes, you're voting to call the question.
Correct.
Oh, okay, I thought we were.
Okay, so do we need to?
No.
Okay.
Correct that, no.
Mr. Cash is, I have Ms. Durham as a no and Mr. Cash as a no. Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Fiskus?
No.
Ms. Apria?
No.
Mr. Galbraith?
No.
Ms. Cleveland?
No.
Mr. Wimberly?
I'm sorry, I'm a little bit confused. Is a no vote to call the question or a vote against calling the question? And I guess a point of order, we still will be discussing the proposal pending the outcome of this motion, correct?
That's correct. That is correct.
So what's the answer to my question?
So the answer is, if you are voting no, you're saying you do not want to call the question, and you want the discussion to continue as to the amendment only.
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
No.
Ms. Garrett?
No.
Your vote?
All right, go ahead.
I'm sorry, your vote is nine no, two yes.
Okay, so we have one more speaker, Mr. Galbraith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify, I have one question, and I want to clarify one thing, as relates to how bus drivers, the hourly workers who would be, who you said wouldn't be adversely affected, I understand that there would necessarily be a number of bus drivers who wouldn't be running their routes, correct?
Is this question about the amendment, Mr. Galbraith?
It is, because it speaks to the difference between going for a half a day and not going for a half a day.
Okay, thank you.
So if we did not go for a half day because of the services we offer, we've actually been running the gen ed routes to serve those students who need to get picked up for internet access as well. In addition to, some of the gen ed buses have actually been picking up students with disabilities because they're spread out more, because there are fewer students. So Mark Samuels, just to double check, the routes are still being run on those days. So just to double check, those routes still are being run? Am I referring to remote days or if we do a full day or a half day?
Yes, sir, unless the schools can tell us exactly who are the only children that come to school, might be able to tailor those. But so far, on remote days, we have run all routes.
Okay, thank you. That was just my question. Appreciate it.
Okay. Are there any other questions about the amendment? If not, we'll move to the vote, and what we are voting on is Ms. Apria's amendment, which is to grant elementary two full asynchronous days this semester, and then in the spring semester, asynchronous days that align with the calendar days of the full asynchronous days, and then have staff pick the additional asynchronous days that they have.
Half day.
Additional asynchronous half days for elementary. Okay, I believe we're ready to vote.
Angela Durham?
Oh, excuse me, just a minute. Do we have a recommendation from the superintendent?
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry.
Yes, I do not recommend approval.
No.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
No.
Brad Fiskus?
No.
Jen Apria?
Yes.
Jake Galbraith?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
No.
Rick Wimberly?
No.
Eric Welch?
No.
Casey Hall?
No.
Nancy Garrett?
No.
Your vote is eight no, three yes.
Okay, so the amendment does not pass. Now we're back to the main motion, which is the full asynchronous days for both elementary and high school, two this semester and six next semester. Okay. And do we move forward with a discussion on this motion? I think we have discussed a lot that impacts this motion, but if you have something that has not come up in the previous discussion, please go ahead and raise your hand. Yes, Mr. Fiskus?
Back to the question about meals on this, is this something that they would need to come, of course arrange, and then they would need to come the day of the flex day to get their meal? Or are they able to take meal home with them the day before? It's a little bit of both, so I think the answer is yes to both your questions, Mr. Samuels, if you would address that.
We've had good success with the meal kits, where families preorder those meal kits, and that's typically what we've been doing. So they just need to preorder the meal kits, and we would have them provided to the families in time for the day before. Those kits also have been picked up by families in groups of four or five, depending upon how many meals, so it can work a couple of different ways. But we provide whatever was most convenient for the families.
Any other discussion? I see no hands up for the virtual participants either. If not, we can move to a vote on the main motion.
Madam Chair, I just want to clarify, we had Mr. Welch made the motion for this, and I had Mr. Fiskus second.
That's correct.
Back in the beginning, okay. Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Abstain.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Jen Apria?
Yes.
Jake Galbraith?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
I have 10 yes, one abstain.
Okay, so the motion does pass for the asynchronous days. Moving on, Board Policies First Reading, 5.500 Discrimination Harassment of Employees. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is first reading of one of three policies related to discrimination. I want to preface it by letting you all know and those who are watching that Dana Osbrooks, WCS's attorney, actually spent a good bit of time speaking with the State Department of Education Office for Civil Rights in creating these proposed significant changes to this policy and the others. Staff recommends approval at first read.
Do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Mitchell, motion to approve? Do we have a second? Mr. Welch, second discussion? Yes, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was looking for it, and I'm not finding it real quickly, but there was at least one comment that was sent in from a student that was talking about the overly broad nature of the definition of location, I guess, or bullying. Can we speak to that a little bit about, does this, the way it's worded expand our, or put us in potential questioning of whether we are overstepping our bounds?
That's a good question. In a policy committee meeting, there was quite a discussion about that very issue. And you all may recall that there's been some sentiment for school systems to discipline students for events that occur outside of school. Likewise, you've heard some arguments that we should not overstep our bounds. There's a very clear, clearly defined legal line. The question then for administrators is where the particular event occurs on that line. So I want to get Ms. Osbrooks, if you will, to tell the board where that line is, especially in the context of policy.
And so, Mr. Golden, yes, I will. I do want to point out that the policy that we are discussing right now deals with employees.
Yeah, thank you.
And so I think your question is, Mr. Mitchell, is the bullying and harassment policy, is that?
That I believe it is, yeah. I think you're absolutely right.
Okay, and I'm happy to address that now. I just wanted to point out, it's not what was being shown up on the screen.
No, you're correct. I will save that question for later.
Okay.
My apologies.
No problem. Any other discussion? No? Okay, move to a vote? Okay, let's move to a vote then.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Jen Apria?
Yes.
Jake Galbraith?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Thank you. The next item is Policy 5.501 Complaints and Grievances. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Likewise, as I referenced to start, this is the first proposed reading for complaints and grievances, which is designed by Ms. Osbrooks to separate out portions of the other two policies to make sure that it's clear to members of the community how to complain in the event of an allegation of discrimination or other related inappropriate behavior. Staff recommends approval.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Cash makes the motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Fiskus seconds? Any discussion? Do you know discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Jen Apria?
Yes.
Jake Galbraith?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Thank you. And the final item we have on our agenda tonight is Policy 6.304.01 Student Discrimination, Harassment, Bullying, Cyberbullying, and Intimidation. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, again, a revision based on some detailed discussions and work that Ms. Osbrooks has had. I do want to point out specifically that this particular policy is including harassment and bullying, cyberbullying, intimidation, all in one. Historically, there's been a separation of some of those, but I think it emphasizes that bullying can be based on those inappropriate reasons as well. Staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I assume.
Motion from Mr. Mitchell, do we have a second?
Okay.
Second.
Ms. Apria seconds? Is there any further discussion? Yes.
I would like my question.
Sure.
From before answered, and then I'll make a statement as well.
Absolutely, Mr. Mitchell. And in this particular policy, and I think your question was about the location of either harassment or acts, and whether or not this was too broad of a definition, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I think it's a fair statement. Do we, are we extending our bounds of responsibility, I guess?
Sure, sure. So in this draft, it's actually on the first page, lines five through 11, where we talk about the policy would cover behaviors while on school property, at any school-sponsored activity, on school-sponsored equipment or transportation, or at any official school bus stop. And then it further states if the act takes place off of school property or outside of a school-sponsored activity, the policy is in effect if the conduct is directed specifically at a student and has the effect of creating an educational, a hostile educational environment, or otherwise creating a substantial disruption to the education environment or the learning process. And then you'll notice it goes to a footnote, and that footnote actually references Tennessee Code Annotated with that specific language. I know in the policy meeting, we discussed that while this language may be new to our WCS policy, it is language that has been in case law for many years, and that it has been the standard that Mr. Golden, before myself and myself, have trained our administrators on when we are looking at where specific conduct takes place. And that if that conduct, that could be harassment, takes place outside of a school-sponsored activity or off-campus, then what our administrators look at, or whoever's doing the investigation, is, did that create a hostile educational environment, or was it a substantial distraction? And that is the test per state law and court cases for many years in the state of Tennessee.
And if I may, Mr. Mitchell, I want to add this, because this is where, I've used boots on the ground already today, but I'm going to say this is where the rubber hits the road in this example. Every single allegation deserves investigation. One of the things we emphasize to our administrators is, in this context, don't just assume that it doesn't fit it because you just quickly heard it happened off-campus. Everyone must be investigated. And to that point, even outside of policy, there are still some tools in our administrators' toolbox, even if they can't discipline, which includes a conversation with the parent of a student who they found to do something, a conversation with the student, hey, look, as an example, this happened off-campus, you need to know that these are the kinds of things that have the potential to impact campus, to help students make better decisions the next time. So the practical is often not in the policy, because this policy has a lot of concentration on code sections. But from a training perspective, it's real important for our administrators to know, has to be investigated, and there's still some advice and training that you can give students and even their parents if you find something has happened, but it's really technically outside the scope of school discipline.
Thank you, Mr. Golden, and thank you, Dana. I guess my comment on this is, I think we have a right and an expectation to ensure our students have a worry-free place to learn at, and we need to make sure we're doing everything we can to ensure our schools are a safe haven for our students. And those of us that think bullying ends when a child gets off the bus and goes home, harassment ends, you know, outside of the schoolroom, you know, that's just not the way it is anymore. And I can, you know, none of us grew up in this environment where you live in a television show, and you're watching all of your friends on the computer and social media, and you can see who's talking about you and who isn't, right? So I think we absolutely need to make sure our policies do everything they can to protect the students from extended bullying and harassment. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Any other discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Angela Durham?
Yes.
Dan Cash?
Yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Yes.
Jen Apria?
Yes.
Jay Galbraith?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Yes.
Eric Welch?
Yes.
Casey Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Yes.
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Board, I believe that's all the business that's in front of us tonight, Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything else?
No, ma'am, I do want to thank you for that, for that good discussion and debate. I very much respect that you all as a board are, are doing, and thank you for stepping up and letting me know that you wanted to participate in that.
Thank you, everybody. Good evening. This meeting is adjourned.